All right. I'll now call to order the City County Council meeting from Monday, April the 13th, 2020. Before I start, before we move on to the rest of the business this evening, I ask that you enjoin me in remembering IMPD Officer Rayanne Leath. I know that our entire city, including each of you, keenly felt the loss of Officer Leath, a young mother who proudly served both her country and her hometown. She represented the best of what we as a community can be. And her death was a tragedy, but her life is an inspiration. We honor her by embracing her example of enthusiastic service, unflinching sacrifice, and unwavering courage. Let us pause for a moment of silence to remember Officer Leath and honor all our brave law enforcement and first responders tonight. We'll begin our meeting with a prayer and pledge of allegiance led by Counselor Graves. Counselor Graves?
Mr. President, thank you very much for this opportunity. Mr. President, if you will, I want to invite Dr. Pastor Clyde Posley Jr. to pray for us in this moment. Just a few words about Dr. Posley. He is the senior pastor of Antioch Baptist Church in the heart of Indianapolis, and he's been there for 21 years. Dr. Posley holds a Master's of Arts degree in urban ministry.
We will ask Counselor Graves when he joins us at a later point in the--
Okay. Are you not able to hear me?
--in our meeting this evening, if we have the opportunity for prayer. But in the meantime, let us do the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America--
United States of America.
To the republic--
Republic, for which it stands.
One nation--
One nation--
Under God--
Under God--
Indivisible--
Liberty--
Liberty--
Justice--
For all--
Justice--
For all--
Thank you, councilors. Madam Clerk, a clerk will now conduct a voice roll call. Counselors, please signify by stating your name and answering present following the clerk's reading of your name so that we have a clear record of who is in attendance. Madam Clerk, please proceed with the roll call.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Adamson.
Counselor Adamson is here.
Counselor Anay.
Counselor Anay is present.
Counselor Barth.
Counselor Barth, present.
Counselor Boots.
Counselor Boots, present.
Are you ready for Pastor Posley to pray?
Counselor Brown.
Counselor Brown, present.
Counselor Carlino.
Counselor Carlino, present.
Counselor Dill.
Counselor Dill, present.
Counselor Ethan Evans.
Counselor Ethan Evans, present.
Counselor Jared Evans.
In the name of Jesus Christ, we thank you for the privilege to come before this august body at such a precious time as this. We come to you, Father, realizing that we are in a moment in time where there are huddled masses who are yearning to be free, who even themselves are affected by the effects of this pandemic of practice, social distancing. We ask you in the name of Jesus, as we come today, that you would bless the proceedings that are before us today, and hold our pressures it is, the work that this council does in our state. We come to you, Father, realizing that you have created an atmosphere for us, or permitted one, where it does not so much matter whether one is Republican or Democrat. Political affiliations have become secondary to the glaring, obvious needs of the downtrodden that's behind wounded citizens or poor. I ask for favor tonight over the decisions, compassion, and diligence that this board will make on behalf of our city as they deliberate. Please, Father, bless their patience, their tolerance of one another, the neighbor which sits beside them as well as the neighbor who will be most affected by the decisions that they make. I, along with these kingdom leaders, would ask you to bless all that is done, bless President Osley, and all of the party members of both the situations, to be and to do, by choosing to be and to do, what our city needs today. It is in Jesus' name that I pray. I close this prayer in expectation that your will will be done. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Madam Clerk, will you continue with the roll call?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Jared Evans.
Counselor Jared Evans here.
Counselor Graves.
Counselor Graves here.
Counselor Gray. Counselor Hart.
Counselor Hart, here, present.
Counselor Holliday.
Present, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Jackson. Jackson, present.
Counselor Johnson, present.
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Jones, present.
Counselor Lewis.
Counselor Lewis, present.
Counselor Mascary.
Counselor Mascary, present.
Counselor McCormick.
Jessica McCormick, present.
Counselor Maury.
Counselor Maury, present.
Counselor Oliver. Counselor Oliver. Counselor Osley.
Present.
Counselor Potts.
Counselor Keith Potts, present.
Counselor Ray.
Madam Clerk, how many councilors are present this evening?
Twenty.
All right, seeing as we're-- we will proceed with official communications. Madam Clerk, will you begin with official communications?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, you are hereby notified that regular meetings of the City County Council and Police, Fire, and Solid Waste Collection Special Service District Councils will be held in the City County Building in the council chambers on Monday, April 13th, 2020, at 7:00 PM. The purposes of such meetings being to conduct any and all business that may properly come before regular meetings of the councils. Sincerely, Bob Osley, President, City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the call of the State of Indiana, a call to be published in the Court and Commercial Record and in the Indianapolis Star on Friday, March 20th, 2020, a copy of a notice of public hearing on proposal number 89, 2020, said hearing to be held on Monday, April 13th, 2020, at 7:00 PM in the Public Assembly Room of the City County Building. Respectfully, Sarita Hughes, Clerk of the City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the laws of the State of Indiana, a call to be published in the Indianapolis Star on Wednesday, April 8th, 2020, and in the Court and Commercial Record on Friday, April 10th, 2020, a copy of a notice of public hearing on proposal numbers 136 and 137, 2020, said hearing to be held on Monday, April 13th, 2020, at 7:00 PM in the Public Assembly Room of the City County Building. Respectfully, Sarita Hughes, Clerk of the City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, I have approved of my signature and delivered this day to the Clerk of the City County Council, Sarita Hughes, the following ordinances--
Order number two and three--
General ordinance numbers two and three-- General resolution numbers one through three-- and special resolution number 14. Joseph H. Hoxette, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. President. This concludes the official communications.
I can't hear you. I didn't hear a word you just said.
Mr. President, I cannot hear you, Counselor Gray.
Counselor Gray, President Osley is working on his sound. He's working on the sound. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Could you let me know when he's up and going?
Will do.
Madam Clerk, could you also maybe get a message to Dr. Kane, let her know that her computer is not muted?
All right, councilors, can you hear me now?
Yes. Yes.
All right. My apologies, we had some audio issues. We will begin again. The next item on our agenda is introduction of guests to provide updates on the COVID-19 response here in Indianapolis. Those guests are Dr. Virginia Kane, who is the Director of the Marion County Public Health Department; Ms. Ann Mertlow, who is President of the United Way of Central Indiana; and Michael Huber, President of the Indianapolis Chamber. I would ask for each to speak three to five minutes, and then I'm going to ask for councilors to pose any questions, and I'd like to keep that at about 10 minutes maximum. So if possible, I'd like to ask Dr. Kane to provide us some updates, and we can keep that at maybe three to four minutes. I know you have amazing amounts of information, but you will be asked, I'm sure, a number of questions by our councilors. So, Dr. Kane, please.
So, thank you very much. Just to give you an update, it seems like an echo, and I don't know if I can correct this. Is my volume--
Mr. President.
Hi.
Mr. President, this is Counselor McCormick. Dr. Kane has two sign-ins, so she has two different videos in right now, so that's probably why she's hearing the feedback.
Can I delete one?
Yes, please.
How do I delete? Okay, now can you hear me? Yeah, that's much better. Thank you so much. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. So, we currently have up to 3,012 cases with 123 deaths, okay? We are working very hard to be able to break that down, the demographic data for Marion County, by the end of this week. We unfortunately had some hospital glitches with our data. But from a preliminary standpoint, we are looking at, it appears that 20% of these cases are in our white population. In our early preliminary data, looks like at least African-Americans making up at least 40% of our case. And we predict it could go as high as 45%. With the majority of our cases in males at 70%, with 40% of our cases in female. But unfortunately, we're missing a significant number of cases that we've been able to identify by their demographics. So, by the end of the week, we should be able to have a good data and more up-to-date with our cases. I do want to quickly tell you, we've had three major initiatives, very concerned about our homeless population, where we are trying to make sure that we have set up multiple homeless shelters with no more than 100 in a shelter, because if we get some positive homeless patients, they can infect all of the homeless in a particular community. And so that's been very critical for our operations. We've also provided what we call SRI teams. These are teams that are able to go into our correctional facilities and do testing for anyone that may be positive with our inmate system and do the necessary testing related to that. We've also provided guidance to the judicial system to recommend early release of nonviolent offenders for home detention and GPS monitoring in order to reduce the number of inmates in our jails, because if confined, could lead to a major outbreak in our correctional facility. As you know, we're working close in hand with our Long Term Care Association, providing guidance on nursing homes. We set up our first drive-through testing for city essential workers, which started 10 days ago. And we continue to do contact investigations of coronavirus-positive patients to determine exposure and who should go on a 14-day of quarantine. We're lastly setting up what's called a alternate point-of-care facility. This is like an overflow hospital type of setting, where if our hospitals go overwhelmed, we have another location where we can have what we call medical surge patients be able to be taken care of, and it will have a capacity up to about 200 patients if any hospital setting needs more hospital beds. Based on our statistical modeling, we think that our peak of cases will occur the last week in April through the first two weeks of May, where we'll be at the height of our cases, and hoping that we will not overwhelm our hospital care systems. And I do, President Bob would like to have some recommendations to the city councils after I answer questions related to the epidemic, that I think is really critical to curtaining City Councilman Osley, I cannot hear you. Do I need to-- can everybody else hear, Mr. Osley? So other council members do not appear to hear you, President Osley.
All right. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
All right, perfect. Thank you very much, Dr. Kane, for your presentation. Fellow councilors, if you have any questions, please raise your hand, and I'll call upon you. All right, we'll start with Counselor Maury. Counselor Maury, if you can unmute?
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Kane--
Yes, sir.
--I had an email last week, or the week before last, asking about the golf course closure. To my understanding, the Donut Counties do not have a similar closure. I can understand shutting down golf courses for riding and being a golf cart, but when we are looking at shutting down a golf course altogether, I think we're really hurting these folks that own these golf courses, and that maintenance of the golf course to make sure it's in pristine condition when they get back out there is still there for them. I mean, water costs alone to, you know, a water golf course, I can imagine is astronomical. What is the reason, for one, I guess, I have not heard back from you? Two--
And let me just say, I apologize for not getting back to you. The city of Indianapolis kept receiving persistent calls related to people abusing the shelter-in-place privilege with a number of the golf courses, so that they would have and see gatherings of 10 to 12 people, as many as that, at a golf hole, obviously not displaying any six-feet difference, and also having large gatherings inside the facility where food was being served. And it was my understanding that cautions were given to all of the golf courses to please stay in compliance, but we continued to have persistent, I guess you want to say, folks who were noncompliant. Will I tell you that there were a significant number of golf courses who did an outstanding job following the rules, making sure that only one person was on a cart? Yes, that was the case, but they did have, continue to have significant complaints with a small percentage of them. I have asked that we look and revisit that at the end of the month to see whether we should relift that ban. Thank you. So, Mr. Osley, if you're speaking, I can't hear you again. Still can't hear you.
Counselor Hart, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Now I can hear you.
All right. So, Counselor Hart, you had a question, and then we'll follow up with Counselor Jones.
Yeah, so my question is in reference to the care facilities. If you were doing, or if we're considering the use of birth centers for, you know, obviously, I'm sure infants are extremely high risk of this, have any consideration gone into birth centers within Marion County to try and separate COVID patients from new mothers?
So, yes, there is recommendations that if you have pregnant mothers and they are at risk for COVID, we have really tried to work on trying to separate them from other positive patients, what we call cohorting, so that if I have, let's just say they're confined in a correctional facility, and they're pregnant or they have newborn babies, we try at our 100 utmost ability to try to make sure they are removed and not in the same vicinity as individuals who are positive. And we've tried to work very hard on that to date.
Thank you, Dr. Kane.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Kane. Counselor Jones, did you have a question? All right, are there any additional questions from councilors? Counselor Boots?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Kane, I appreciate all the work you've been doing, and just had a question with respect to nursing homes and specifically memory care units. I've had a couple constituents call, one whose parent passed away last week in such a memory care unit, and the concern she expressed was that, particularly in the memory care units, it's very difficult to maintain social distancing, and as you well know, they often hold hands and like human touch. Is there anything specifically being done with nursing homes and any type of focus on that, and particularly the memory care units?
So, what we're-- sure, that's a great question and a very difficult and big challenge for us, because as you say, some of them may be Alzheimer's patients, and like you say, they may hug or greet. So what we're trying to do, we were only able to have testing available to our local health department just last week. So we're trying to go into those facilities that have identified anyone that's positive in a memory care setting, to try to identify them, whether they have symptoms or not, in order to remove the positive patients from anybody that are negative in the rest of those memory care. So we just had that availability last week. We are starting to test in long-term care facilities. We have at least 56 in Marion County, so we're trying to concentrate on those facilities that have maybe more than two or three COVID-positive patients in that setting. But they are, because of their behavior, are at considerably high risk for contracting this, so we really want to identify anyone positive in those areas.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great question.
Thank you, Dr. Kane. Any additional questions of Dr. Kane from councilors?
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Kane, I just want to say, before I ask my question, I just want to extend appreciation on behalf of District 23. We're appreciative for you and your team for all the hard work that you folks have put in. I'm just curious if you could give us a brief rundown, just an idea of some of the folks that you work with at the state and federal level, just an idea of how we're all working together to achieve the best possible situation here in Indianapolis. Thank you.
So, we have worked on a federal level, and I'll just start with-- And I'll just start with the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. Dr. Jay Butler, who is over the infectious disease section for the Centers for Disease Control. We've been frequent calls with him, where the State Department of Health has been on those calls and myself, asking technical questions and concerns related to some of the considerable outbreaks or potential outbreaks that have been related to that. When we look at on a state level, I'm in conversations with the Indiana State Health Commissioner, Christina Box. I would say probably on the average, about at least two or three times a day. I have to knock Dr. Box a little bit. She knows I like to watch Perry Mason from 11:30 at night to 12:30 in the morning. And she has called me at midnight during, that's my only relaxation that I have. And so I do knock her sometimes for calling me and she's calling at 4:51 in the morning. So we're, we have constant communication with Dr. Box as well as her deputy health commissioner, Pam Platonis, on a frequent basis. I will probably say that with the Division of Family Social Services, Dr. Jen Sullivan, I probably talk to her probably on the average of at least about twice a week. So we really try to do our coordination well, trying to work out any bugs so that we're not duplicating and just trying to coordinate our efforts on a national level.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Kane. When this is all said and done and we get to where we want to be back to normal, I wish you many days off watching Perry Mason. You've earned it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much, Dr. Kane. We have a question from Councilor Oliver.
Yes, Councilor Oliver. I can hear you barely. Could you talk a little louder?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yes, you're one of my biggest fans. Perry Mason's your biggest fan. I believe between Dr. Pechey, Governor Cuomo, and Dr. Vinny King in that office.
Thank you, sir.
I got two questions of interest. One, is the unpride environment on service that been brought to the city in Detroit? Whether to use there? Is there any thought or suggestion that bring that to any that? And so, what is your opinion on that?
I couldn't quite hear the question. I don't know if you could repeat it, President Bopp.
Yes, Councilor Oliver was asking about a serum, some serum that has been introduced as a test in Detroit and whether or not you, one, are aware of it and, two, would you have any, any interest in bringing that, that sort of experimental work here to Indianapolis?
So if I'm not mistaken, that may be the clinical trial that is looking at antibodies. These are patients that have had a COVID-19 infection and their body has developed a normal immune response to the infection. And they may be hoping that these antibodies, which are proteins in your body that your body produces whenever it has an infection, hoping to use antibodies from various patients to see if it provides partial immunity to patients in our communities to see if it makes a difference whether they're getting infected at the same rate as someone who does not have that. So if that's the same study that you're alluding to, we are looking at that study with interest.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Kane. I see there was a question from Councilor Ethan Evans.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for all the work you've done, Dr. Kane. And I wanted to reference something Councilor Enay brought up with your work with the state level and with Dr. Box. I've heard about the governor's address earlier today. And he was asked a question about prisoner release as well at the state level. And I just wanted to know if there had been any talks with Dr. Box and at the state level about expanding what we've been doing at the county level to the state level about low-level, you know, prisoner release and, you know, expanding the strike teams into the state level, you know, penitentiaries and IDOC so that, you know, it can help stop the spread and, you know, flatten the curve at the state level so that it doesn't expand outside Marion County so that we don't have a repeat, you know, come, you know, in the next few months, you know, when people are trapped in, you know, small areas.
So that's a huge concern for us that what we find sometimes is, is that as people who may be released from state prisons, but they may not necessarily be a resident of Marion County, but that our resources may be easier for someone to be released to a homeless shelter, that we may get a disproportionate share of those folks released from state correctional facilities. This is a discussion that we have had with the state. So we're trying to look at that very carefully to make sure that our resources are here. But more important, we'd like for those resources to be available in those counties where these prisoners reside from. So that's a major discussion we are having on a state and local level related to that, to that key issue that you are addressing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Kane, I want to say thank you so much for your presentation this evening. And I also want to say thank you for the data that you provided on the disparities by race of those who have fallen victim to the COVID-19. Obviously, this is of grave concern. And I'd look forward to working alongside of you to see what we can do, one, to address it and, two, to mitigate this at its root. But thank you very much for your presentation this evening.
So, Council Oxley, I have a major issue that I do want to bring before the council for your consideration.
Please.
You know that as our city confronts a public health crisis, I think it's vital that we continue together to save lives and slow the spread of this COVID-19. One important way that we can do that is by encouraging residents to vote by mail rather than try to vote in person on election day. So I want you to know, I fully support providing every voter with an absentee ballot application as a public health strategy for a safer election. Because I think we will continue to have significant coronavirus in our communities June the 2nd. Secondly, I would also like to bring up that as we start to restart to integrate our cities back to their operations prior to this coronavirus, we may still need to make some recommendations such as we may not be able to hold large convention settings still in our community as other states and other cities may be having a later explosion of their cases. And so would like to talk with or work with some city council members about how we can, in terms of our recovery, gradually put things in place and operation. But we may never be able to go back to where we were completely back to prior to the coronavirus. So as we're going to look real closely at the golf courses, whether we can reopen them, there may be some other things that we feel we may be able to reopen. And so what should those things be first? Because you just can't open everything completely all at once. So like to work with some members of the city council to work on those strategies.
Thank you. I'm sure that you will have a number of volunteers. We'll get with our council members and to see who we could move forward to work alongside of you.
Thank you so much. And I just want to thank again for the strong support we've had for our city council members. A lot of you have done a great job in doing education to your constituent members. And we appreciate that greatly. And we'll continue to provide you the information you need in order to address our epidemic in Marion County. So on behalf of our chairman of the board, Joyce Rogers from Health and Hospital Corporation, we extend you our support for any of your initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kane. Thank you for your work. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
All right. All right, councilors. Next, we would like to hear from Ann Mertlow, who is president of United Way of Central Indiana. Ms. Mertlow?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Wonderful. Good evening, President Oxley and councilors. Thank you for having me back tonight to brief you on our activities since I was last here on March 16. Just 10 days before I spoke to you last, on March 6th, Indiana recorded its first case of COVID-19. Just a week later, on March 13th, United Way, in conjunction with five other funders, Lilly Endowment, CICF, Eli Lilly and Company Foundation, Richard M. Fairbanks Foundation, and the Nida Mason Polium Charitable Trust, announced the establishment of the Central Indiana COVID-19 Community Economic Recovery Fund, or CSURF. The fund was launched with $17 million in commitments from the founding funders and has since grown to over $22 million with the support from foundations, corporations, and individuals in our community. The purpose of the fund is to support human services organizations making up the human services safety net and provide individuals with basic needs and information and referral services. Our goal is basically to meet the rapidly growing demand for services caused by the economic effects of the coronavirus crisis. This has been a particularly challenging time for these organizations during this crisis for several reasons. Revenue losses from canceled programs, lost donations, and postponed fundraising events has been severe. Sources of volunteers that those organizations count on to deliver services have all but dried up in large part because corporations are no longer supporting volunteer programs that provide most of those volunteers. And traditional walk-in service models that most of those organizations provide have had to be completely redesigned to provide outreach services and virtual services. The type of plan that United Way is taking to deal with all of this is basically a five-point plan. The first point is to work with stakeholders. And those would include the city, including Deputy Mayor Jeff Bennett and Dr. Virginia Kane, state officials, including Secretary Dr. Jen Sullivan at FSSA and her counterpart at DCS, those on the front line at hundreds of human service agencies, and all of the funders that we just mentioned. And we're working with all of those folks to identify the most critical emergent needs as they arise during this crisis. And as you know, they just change day to day, week to week. The second is to resource the human services sector to address those most critical and emergent needs while practicing responsible social distancing. So understanding that we have to resource those, but we have to do that in a way that allows those organizations to actually provide services while making sure that we don't make the health crisis worse. The third is to coordinate funding to ensure that what the limited philanthropic resources we have will supplement relief dollars provided by the government and avoid to the greatest extent possible duplicative efforts. Recognizing that the amount of money that will be coming from the government will be very significant, but sometimes takes a while to get here. I'm going to talk about those three first and then I'll come back to the last two. So to date, the focus has been on these first three points. We've made two distributions, large distributions of funds from CSURF, totaling nearly $12 million to 74 human services organizations focusing on the following critical areas of need. Food access, safe sheltering for homeless, domestic violence victims, and children whose parents or guardians have been hospitalized and who have nowhere else to go. So essentially, they are put into the child welfare system because hospitals have nowhere to send them. Childcare for first responders and healthcare workers. Disaster planning, like blood collection and infrastructure support, so particularly 211 services that provide information and referral services that include not only connection with nonprofit, but also connection to government services like how to sign up for unemployment. Disaster planning, oh, I'm sorry, essential in-home care for the elderly and disabled. So in-home care now for folks who just cannot do without these in-home services. And these are caregivers who really have to provide services and cannot do it while social distancing. But these are people who absolutely cannot survive without this care. Mental health services. Support for multi-service neighborhood centers, so our community centers. And services for underserved or isolated communities, including LGBTQ, refugees, immigrants, and communities of color. In addition, United Way has focused on educating the human services sector on the significant benefits available to nonprofit organizations under the provisions of the CARES Act, such as the ability to access forgivable SBA loans. And we've done that by providing webinars and resources immediately following the passage of the Act so that our nonprofits in central Indiana would be prepared to act very quickly to take advantage of these critical supports. And then finally, as others, such as the medical community and CICP, and this goes, this goes to our fourth and fifth points. As others like the chambers and CICP are looking for ways to safely get us back to work, we are looking forward to the human services supports necessary to support getting people back to work. Because with schools closed and with daycares closed, summer programming for children is unclear. And that leaves childcare options and thus return-to-work options less than certain for many families. That creates great uncertainty for employers who are relying on the return of their workforce to drive productivity necessary to restart the economy. And without that supporting infrastructure, we will struggle to quickly regain equilibrium, even with the easing of the health crisis. So what I mean by that is, as we start to think, as we all would like to, although Dr. Kane's recommendations to you were a bit sobering, I have to say, as we like to think about getting people back to work, if we're not also thinking about how to get childcares and these summer programs back up so that people have a place to take their children, we will find that we don't have the workforces ready to to take their children, we will find that we don't have the workforces ready to get our businesses back up and going. And so United Way is always thinking not just about disaster recovery, like we have during our healthcare crisis, but also about the long-term recovery, which starts with things like long-term childcare options, but also about the long-term family recovery, which includes things like financial stability and reemployment of people in our community. So we are mindful that the actions that we take now will play a role in how quickly we are able to reach that desired outcome in the future. And that's why we made an investment from our Family Opportunity Fund to the Indianapolis E-Learning Fund that was announced last week by the mayor, in large part because we know that household technology and connectivity will be a key to the success of all generations in our households when this crisis is over. We are here not just for the short term, but for the long term, and will continue to serve with our focus on basic needs, family opportunity, and social innovation, both now and in the future. We deeply appreciate our partnership with the city in all forms of its government, as we collectively serve its citizenry in its time of need. So thank you very much for the opportunity to brief you again and for your partnership and leadership at this time.
Thank you so much, and thank you for spending the time with us this evening. Fellow councilors, do we have questions for Ms. Mertlow? Counselor Boots? I believe you are muted.
There we go. Thank you, Mr. President. And I really appreciate United Way as well and what you're doing, particularly working with the other community partners on this fund. Is there a way, Ms. Mertlow, that we can get a, maybe a weekly status, a single-page infographic, whatever is convenient for your organization with these ongoing stats? That's something I do with a weekly update with my district, and one thing I am covering is what United Way is doing with CICF and what have you. So is there a possibility you could start supplying that information?
The best way to get that is, we're not doing regular funding rounds, so we're doing them as quickly as we can, but the information is contained in our press releases. So we have two of those that have come out so far, and they list all of the organizations we have funded and the areas that we've focused on. I'm happy to send those both to you. And we can make sure that we put all of the councilors on our distribution list as a regular distribution point.
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
And it can also be found on our website if you ever need them. That's just uwci.org if you ever need to find them quickly.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Do we have any additional questions from Ms. Mertlow? All right, very good. Ann, thank you for spending the time with us this evening. We're very grateful. Thank you for the work that you're doing and the collaborations that you're making.
My pleasure. Thank you for your support.
All right. And then I would like to ask if Mike Huber is still with us, if he, Mike Huber, President of Indianapolis Chamber?
Yes.
If he could provide a presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Again, I just appreciate your leadership in this incredibly uncertain time. I notice that all of you continue to serve your constituents and hold public meetings, even if it's in non-traditional ways. So thank you for your leadership at this time. A month ago, President Osley asked several of us, including Dr. Kane, including Ann Mertlow and myself, and it feels like a year ago to me, I'm sure it feels like a year ago to all of you. As I recall, on that day that you met a month ago, the chamber had just put up what we call the Rapid Response Hub, which can still be found at response.indchamber.com. And at that time, the purpose of the hub was to bring together all of this information, primarily for small business, but for anybody, whether they were directives from Dr. Kane, or Mayor Hogsitt, or the governor, or the federal government, we could put that in one place, because that was a time when it felt like the information was changing on an hour-to-hour basis. And I know that's been the case for much of the last month. Our hub received thousands of requests from citizens, many of them business owners, just questions initially like, can I stay open? Should I stay open? What if I have employees that I'm going to need to take to part-time status? What are resources available? We started to see a shift later that week, and really by the week of March 21, it was obvious that we would need, somebody would need to identify loans to at least these businesses, because there is a lot of confusion among businesses about could they stay open? Many of the restaurants had closed their doors. Some were considering whether or not they were going to come back. So we monitored what was happening with the federal government. And if memory serves me, March 25, the federal government passed the CARES Act, the largest relief bill of its type, I think, in American history, and it included aid to small businesses, particularly via the federal SBA, Small Business Administration. And even though the federal government had passed that significant aid package, in our conversations with Mayor Joe Hogsitt, we still felt that some kind of a local loan product would be really, really important for small businesses. And we were really targeting very small businesses that would request amounts of, at the highest, $25,000, but it goes down to that $1,000. So on March 28, Mayor Joe Hogsitt and the Indy Chamber announced the creation of the Rapid Response Loan Fund. It was seeded with $1 million loans to it by the CIB, a grant of a half a million dollars from the bond bank. And we committed to go raise at least 8.5 million more in the effort to try to create a $10 million local loan fund that was 85% funded by the private sector. And this loan fund was in addition to significant federal money that is coming through the banks, in some cases, tax credits. I'll say a little more about the loan fund, and then just have a couple more things, and then I'll take your questions or comments. We have raised nearly $6 million so far, so the private sector has stepped up to contribute about four and a half million. The most recent contribution was a $1 million grant from the Bruce White Family Foundation. Anthem also contributed $1 million. We've had several banks contribute six figures, and we've got additional funders that they've given us a verbal, but we hope to, once we get it in writing, make public announcement of more. I do believe that in the next few weeks, we will exceed $10 million. I'll tell you, the requests that we have received as of this morning, so this is, the loan program had been in existence for two weeks. And again, this is the Rapid Response Loan Program created by the Indy Chamber with a significant investment from the city of Indianapolis. And this is two weeks ago. Our organization had received 830 total requests as of this morning. Not all of those requests will turn into loan applications because they're talking with a live person about maybe problems or challenges their businesses having. And sometimes, one of our folks may direct them to one of the federal sources as a primary source, but of course, our newly created loan program is available. So 830 total requests, 392 applications, and then over 100 of those applications are far enough along in the underwriting process and approval process. And last week, we closed 22 loans in excess of $388,000 in funds. We expect to do a lot more than that by the close of this week, based on the demand. The industries that are inquiring about this loan fund, it's about 16% food and beverage, about 14% real estate and construction, 9% is other retail, so not restaurants, 9% personal services and care, 7.5% business and professional services, and then an assortment of others. But there's no question that the restaurants have been hit very hard. Now, I will say, the federal aid that is coming is significant, and it will make a difference. But you know, anytime there's a new program, there's kind of a scramble, because we're talking about small business owners. Many of these are businesses that don't necessarily have, you know, an HR director or an accountant that's got the time to research these new federal programs. But I do want to mention, there's the Paycheck Protection Program that many of you are familiar with, that Ann Mertlow mentioned, or the PPP, to which businesses can apply directly through their banks. There are the EIDL, or Economic Injury Disaster Loans, that businesses can apply to SBA, at sba.gov directly. And then there are various tax credits that we encourage businesses to speak to their accounts. So when we interact with these businesses, our first advice is, are you talking to your banker? Are you talking to your accountant? Because oftentimes, the best thing that we can do is steer them toward the federal, like, Paycheck Protection Program, which that money will be converted into forgivable loans. The loan program that we released, those loans are at about 3.75%. But we're seeing an overwhelming amount of demand. And for instance, if all of the requests that we received turned into actual loan applications, they won't, but this is kind of how we measure ourselves, there would be almost $16 million in total funding requested. So we are going to have our work cut out for us in trying to raise that full 10 million, and we believe that the number should be a little bit higher. So I want to thank you for your support, because this local loan product is a really important complement to the federal dollars. And in some cases, businesses that are eligible for the federal programs that I mentioned are going to need four, or six, or eight weeks of working capital just to keep their businesses afloat. We are trying to keep as many small businesses alive as we possibly can and give the business owners hope during this incredibly uncertain time. And through your support, I believe we are going to be able to do that through hundreds of businesses that will receive, you know, loans between $25,000 and $1,000 as a complement to what the banks are doing, as a complement to the federal dollars. The last thing that I'll say before I take your questions or comments is, this is aimed at small business. The city's dollars that Mayor Hogsitt contributed must be used in Marion County. The CIB's loan must be directed toward food and beverage businesses, which also happens to be our most common industry that's requesting information. But additional private sector dollars do make this a regional program. So 76% of the inquiries this morning were from Marion County, but with certain stipulations, we also do offer it to businesses in the nine-county region. We continue to receive a lot of questions from businesses about employees. How can I protect the interests of my employees? What if I need to take my employees to part-time? What if I need to find part-time employment opportunities for my employees? How can I make them eligible for unemployment insurance? We're working with other partners, including Employ Indy, including United Way, to make sure that we're helping businesses with the full range of options. But 80% of our efforts right now have been directed at this loan program, and the response has been overwhelming. So we thank you for your support, and we're happy to continue to provide updates as long as all of us are dealing with the challenges of this coronavirus crisis. Mr. President, at this time, I'm happy to take your questions.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Huber. Fellow councilors, I see Counselor Robinson. You got a question?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Dr. Kane, for your commentary. And thank you as well from United Way. Thank you, Mike, for your work as well. A couple of questions. When we get an accounting for the funds and how they're being dispersed, primarily for the minority businesses that are participating and receiving loans, and not just minority, though, the breakdown of African-American-owned businesses and the amounts they're receiving as well? 22, I'd like to have it for the 22 first. And also, just as we go through the process, I'd like to see a breakdown of the loan amounts, who's receiving them, the diversity, and also the location of those businesses in our city.
Absolutely. Yes, we would be happy to provide that. And just a high-level estimate, we would estimate that over, let's see, this is just a high-level estimate, but over 25% of our inquiries have been through minority-owned businesses, and the program's two weeks old. But we would be happy to provide a breakdown to the council on a regular basis of the allocation of those dollars and break it down in a segmented manner as we can.
One more, Mr. President?
Please.
So, and also, Mike, how are you advertising and promoting, like with the Indianapolis Recorder, Radio 1, through Black Hex, both through the Urban League? Because again, I do know the Indy Chamber's reach. Are you specifically advertising these loans to those different demographics who may not be aware of what you're doing?
Yeah, so it's early tomorrow, so I'm served on the board of the Indianapolis Urban League and just submitted a request before I got on this call, if they'll have me tomorrow to be on Radio 1 between 1:00 and 3:00 p.m. We had, I'll have to check, we reached out to the recorder through a couple of my colleagues, but I want to confirm, getting the word out is very important, and the program's about two weeks old, and yet, we know we're hitting massive demand. So I would be happy to follow up through the council in terms of how we're leveraging all media to get the word out about the program, counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you very much. Additional questions? Counselor Ethan Evans?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mike, for what you've been doing with the Indy Chamber and for this program. I had been reached out to by a couple people with small businesses, and they had concerns about the repayment of them and the interest. And you know, when I looked online, it said the interest on it was around 3.5% for paying it back. And I was just curious about, you know, the timeline for repayment because, you know, of the situation that they're all currently in right now, about when they would get to reopen and start having the money flow coming in for revenue. You know, what would be the requirements for repayment for that interest to kick in? Or would there be like a deferment in this instance?
Yeah, I appreciate Counselor Evans. So we believe we offer very flexible repayment terms with a long timeline. It depends on the loan, but you know, if they're at the $25,000 mark, which is the ceiling of this particular program, or if it was a much smaller loan. In both cases, I would actually encourage the person to call us, because one of the things that's important for us to do is to see if they're working with their bank and if they're eligible for one of the federal programs I mentioned, because if they're eligible for PPP, that money would be forgivable. And we want to encourage them to exhaust all their possibilities to be eligible for that. And then if they need the Rapid Response Loan Program as a bridge loan or a gap filler, then that would be a secondary or a third priority, if that makes sense. So we would want them to make sure that they're exhausting all possibilities with the federal money, which is the most flexible, and then we would look at their eligibility for our program. So I know that doesn't answer the specific questions that your constituents raised, but that's a perfect opportunity for us to have a dialogue with them and see what would make the most sense for their business.
Good. Additional question for Mr. Huber? All right, thank you. Mike, thank you very much for taking the time this evening and for the work that you're doing to keep our businesses afloat. You've done a tremendous job and given a lot of solace and comfort and encouragement to our local businesses. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Counselor. And Mr. President, thank you, the members of the council. And we will follow back with the reporting that was requested from members of the council tonight.
That's excellent. All right. Well, you all have a good evening. So Dr. Kane, and Ann Mertlow, and Mike Huber, once again, thank you for spending time with us this evening. Thank you. All right. Councilors, we will start, we will get started now on our official business, and I will ask our clerk, the next time our agenda being official communications. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 124, introduced by Counselor Osley, referred to the Metropolitan and Economic referred to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee, approves the statement of benefits of Union at 16th LP, the Annex Group, an applicant for tax abatement for property located in an economic revitalization area. Proposal number?
Just a second. A matter of fact, we may have jumped over a couple of things.
Okay. Okay.
Let's, let's go back to Official Communications, if you, if you could. Would you, would you go through that with me? And then we also have to do some adoption of our agenda for this evening.
Okay, we did do the Official Communications, but I can read them again if you like.
Well, no, actually, you're right. Adoption of the agenda, Counselors? Do I have consent?
Consent.
Consent.
All right, very good. The next item on our agenda is approval of our journals for March of 16, 2020, and April the 6, 2020. Do I have consent?
Consent.
Consent.
All right. There is no business under Special Orders and Presentation of Petitions, Memorial, Special Resolutions, and Council Resolutions. So, Madam Clerk, please now begin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 124, introduced by Counselor Osley, referred to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee, approves the statement of benefits of Union at 16th LP, the Annex Group, an applicant for tax abatement for property located in an economic revitalization area. Proposal numbers 125 through 129 and 131 through 135, refer to the Public Works Committee. Proposal number 125, introduced by Counselor Osley, authorizes parking restrictions on Pennsylvania Street from 16th to 25th Streets in District 11. Proposal number 126, introduced by Counselor Holliday, authorizes a speed limit reduction to 25 miles per hour in the Tyneside Meadows subdivision in District 20. Proposal number 127, introduced by Counselor Jared Evans, authorizes a speed limit reduction to 25 miles per hour in the Spring Valley subdivision in District 22. Proposal number 128, introduced by Counselor Maury, authorizes a speed limit reduction to 25 miles per hour in the Stonebrier subdivision in District 25. Proposal number 129, authorized, I mean, introduce, Counselor Adamson, authorizes a speed limit reduction to 25 miles per hour in the Brookwood subdivision in District 17. Proposal number 131, introduced by Counselor Jones, authorizes intersection controls at Kennington and Iowa Streets in District 16. Proposal number 132, introduced by Counselor Jackson, authorizes a speed limit reduction to 25 miles per hour in the Cherry Lake subdivision in District 14. Proposal number 133, introduced by Counselor Anay, authorizes a speed limit reduction to 25 miles per hour in the Orchard Valley and Rockwood subdivisions in District 23. Proposal number 134, by Counselor Anay, introduced, excuse me, authorizes intersection controls at Capitol Avenue and Midland Road in District 23. Proposal number 135, introduced by Counselor Gray, authorizes intersection controls at 52nd Street and Alameda Road in District 8. Proposals number 136 and 137 were, are referred to the Committee of the Whole and were introduced by Counselor Osley. Proposal number 136 approves the, an additional appropriation in the 2020 budget of the Office of Public Health and Safety Consolidated County General Fund in characters 2, 3, and 4 to be used in response to the coronavirus. Proposal number 137 approves an additional appropriation totaling $2,089,455 in the 2020 budget of the Marion County Election Board, County General, and cumulative capital funds for the mailing of absentee applications, additional express vote machines, and for the necessary equipment to run the Marion County elections of 2020. Proposal number 142, introduced by Counselors Ethan Evans, Brown, Barth, Graves, and Osley, referred to the Public Works Committee, authorizes the bus only and bus and turn lanes for the Purple Line and amends the code to make various changes to chapters 441 and 621 regarding traffic and parking as part of the Purple Lane Rapid Transit Project, one key component of the Marion County Transit Plan. Mr. President, this concludes the introductions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is Special Orders Priority Business. Proposal number 138 is a rezoning ordinance certified for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission on April the 2nd. If no counselor wishes to call down the proposal for reconsideration, the proposal will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down the proposal for reconsideration? All right, seeing no one, the proposal will pass into law. Proposal numbers 139 through 141 are rezoning ordinances certified for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission on April the 2nd, 2020. If no counselor wishes to call down the proposals for reconsideration, the proposals will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down any of the proposals for reconsideration? All right, seeing none, the proposals will pass into law. The next item on our agenda is Special Orders, Public Hearing. Proposal number 80 is a rezoning ordinance for Wayne Township in Council District 15, located at 8150 Rockville Road. Zoning case 2019, CZN 840 was recommended for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission on February 12, 2020. District Councilor McCormick called the matter down for a public hearing. The proposal was continued on March the 16, 2020, as negotiations continued. Both petitioners and remonstrators agreed to forego the preliminary hearing on the matter due to a resolution being reached and new commitments being filed. So let's go to Counselor McCormick for a motion. Counselor McCormick?
Hi, Mr. President. Hi, I'm pleased to report that there are no issues resolved in the rezoning at 8150 Rockville Road. As an agreement has been reached between the petitioner and the remonstrator, and additional commitments have been filed. And it will not be necessary to have a hearing on this matter. Therefore, I move that the public hearing be foregone, and that proposal number 80, 2020, rezoning petition number 2019, CZN 840, be adopted with the newly filed commitments.
Very good. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Thank you very much, Counselors. Section 15179 of our council rules are very specific regarding zoning matters that are called down for a public hearing. So both remonstrators and petitioner are given 20 minutes each to present arguments in addition to comments and questions by counselors and anyone else from the public wishing to speak. And even though the remonstrators of record on proposal number 80, 2020, zoning case 2019, CZN 840, have accepted commitments and agreed to forego the formal presentations and a public hearing on this matter, and accept the rezoning with the new commitments made by the petitioner, the proposal was advertised for public hearing at this meeting. Madam Clerk, have we received any public comment online regarding this proposal?
No, we have not received any.
All right, thank you. And I think my room is practically empty, but I will ask if there's anyone in the public in attendance who would like to speak to proposal number 80, 2020. All right. I see no one. Are there any additional comments from counselors? All right, seeing none. The petition has been duly made and seconded to adopt the rezoning as certified with newly filed commitments. Will now take a vote on proposal 80. Madam Clerk, are we going to go through this, this roll call?
Yes. Counselor Adamson?
Counselor Adamson, I vote yes.
Counselor Anay?
Counselor Anay, I vote yes.
Counselor Barth?
Counselor Barth, yes.
Counselor Boots?
Counselor Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown?
Counselor Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino?
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk?
Counselor Dilk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans?
Counselor Ethan Evans, yes.
Counselor Jared Evans?
Counselor Jared Evans, yes.
Counselor Graves?
Counselor Graves, yes.
Counselor Gray? Counselor Gray? Counselor Hart?
Counselor Hart, yes.
Counselor Holliday?
Holliday, yes.
Counselor Jackson?
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Counselor Johnson, aye.
Counselor Jones?
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Counselor Lewis, aye.
Counselor Mascary?
Counselor Mascary, aye.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye, Counselor McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury?
Counselor Maury, aye.
Counselor Oliver?
Counselor Oliver, aye.
Counselor Osley?
Counselor Osley, aye.
Counselor Potts?
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray? Counselor Ray? Counselor Robinson?
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have 24 yays and one not voting.
All right, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, the next item is proposal 89, referred to Public Works Committee Chairman Adamson.
And Mr. President, pull up my notes here. Proposal number 89 approves an additional appropriation totaling $9,600,000 to 2020 budget of the Department of Public Works, Transportation General, and Solid Waste Collection for personnel and contractual costs for the Engineering Division and to fund additional personnel costs associated with the continued implementation of a second shift for capital equipment for the Operations Division Transportation Fund appropriations supported from an additional anticipated state distribution of gas tax revenues and to fund the leasing of new capital equipment for the Solid Waste Division Solid Waste Collection General Fund. Counselor Jones moved and seconded by Counselor McCormick to amend proposal number 89 that essentially reduces the appropriation from $9,600,000 down to $3,600,000 in the Department of Public Works Transportation General Solid Waste General Collection Fund. The motion to amend proposal number 89 passed by a vote of 11 to 0. Counselor McCormick moved, seconded by Counselor Oliver, to send proposal number 89 to the full council to do pass recommendation, and that motion carried by a vote of 11 to 0, and I so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Counselors. Are there comments from counselors on proposal number 89? All right, seeing none. Is there, has anyone written in on any questions, Madam Clerk, on proposal number 89?
No, we do not have any questions.
Thank you very much. Seeing no, seeing no one in the audience, Counselors, are there any additional comments? Very good. And seeing none, we will proceed to our vote. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Adamson?
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay?
Counselor Anay, aye.
Counselor Barth?
Counselor Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots?
Counselor Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown?
Counselor Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino?
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk?
Counselor Dilk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans?
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans?
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves?
Counselor Graves, yes.
Counselor Gray? Counselor Gray? Counselor Hart?
Michael Hart, aye.
Counselor Holliday?
Counselor Holliday, aye.
Counselor Jackson?
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Counselor Johnson, aye.
Counselor Jones?
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Counselor Lewis, aye.
Counselor Mascary?
Counselor Mascary, aye.
Counselor McCormick?
Hello, Counselor McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury?
Counselor Maury, aye.
Counselor Oliver?
Counselor Oliver, aye.
Counselor Osley?
Counselor Osley, aye.
Counselor Potts?
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray? Counselor Robinson?
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Mr. President, there are 24 yays and zero and one not voting.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 136. I believe everyone has a copy of the proposal, which approves an additional appropriation in the 2020 budget of the Office of Public Health and Safety Consolidated County General Fund in characters 2, 3, and 4 to be used in response to the coronavirus. I believe that our CFO, Scott Hole, might have some comments on this. Mr. CFO, are you available? All right, then we will, we will proceed. Is there a motion to adopt proposal number 136?
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors on proposal number 136? All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, has there been anyone with written-in questions on proposal number 136?
No, no questions or comments.
All right, very good. Additional comments from counselors? Counselor Ethan Evans?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I just had a clarifying question. So this proposal is written in a way that it is limited in scope to just this particular event and situation, if I'm correct. So it said to be used in response to the coronavirus. So meaning that after a period of time, it will expire in and of itself? Or will we have to come back and write a proposal to cancel it out?
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to move that question to our CFO, Mr. Hole. Mr. Hole, are you available now?
Yes, I am. I'm actually replying under TK's. For some reason, my audio isn't working. But the short answer is that, yes, these funds are dedicated to just the response to the current coronavirus epidemic. And unspent funds would return to fund balance at the end of this event. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there a second question? Counselor Boots?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Just for purposes of educating the Council, myself included, as well as those members of the public, could our CFO please go through and just describe generally the, the different buckets of the characterization of these fees and expenses, and what that means from practical terms?
Correct. Yes, so fifty thousand dollars are, be put into character two. Character two would be basically supplies. Specifically, they're going to be looking, purchasing personal protection equipment such as masks, gloves, gowns, hand sanitizer, items such as that. There's four hundred thousand dollars being appropriated to character three. That would be contracts and services. Specifically, what we're looking at here is the lease of a, a chilled warehouse in addition to refrigerated trailer units. They're being utilized by the Marion County Coroner at this time to handle overflow of deceased, deceased individuals. And then three hundred thousand dollars in character four, which is for UV sanitation devices that have presently been requested by the Marion County Sheriff for use in the jail and their facilities. But it's believed that additional agencies, departments will be requesting those devices as well.
Thank you.
All right. Additional questions from Counselors? All right, very good. Seeing none, then. Madam Clerk, I wanted to confirm. We, we have no written-in questions that refer or speak to Proposal number one thirty-six. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. If there are no additional comments, then we will proceed to our vote. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Adamson?
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay?
Counselor Anay, aye.
Counselor Barth?
Counselor Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots?
Counselor Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown?
Counselor Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino?
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk?
Counselor Dilk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans?
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans?
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves?
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray? Counselor Gray? Counselor Hart?
Michael Hart, aye.
Counselor Holliday?
Counselor Holliday, aye.
Counselor Jackson?
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Counselor Johnson, aye.
Counselor Jones?
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Counselor Lewis, aye.
Counselor Masqueri?
Counselor Masqueri, aye.
Counselor McCormick?
Counselor McCormick, aye.
Counselor, Counselor Maury?
Counselor Maury, aye.
Counselor Oliver?
Counselor Oliver, aye.
Counselor Osalee?
Counselor Osalee, aye.
Counselor Potts?
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray?
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson?
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote is twenty-four to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion carries. The next item is Proposal number one thirty-seven, twenty twenty, referred to the Committee of the Hole. I believe everyone has a copy of this proposal as well, which approves an additional appropriation totaling two million eighty-nine thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars in the twenty twenty budget of the Marion County Elections Board, County General and Cumulative Capital Funds for the mailing of absentee applications, rental of additional express vote machines, and for the necessary equipment to run the Marion County Elections of twenty twenty. Is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from Counselors? Counselor Maury?
Thank you, Mr. President. My question for this is, I get the need for more polling equipment, but I question whether we need to be sending out a one point four million dollar mailer to absentee voters. I think we could better use our resources towards asking or questioning the folks send in a request for an absentee ballot before the May twenty-first deadline. I think with what we're doing right now, I think we're being a little bit irresponsible with taxpayers' money to spend this much money to mail it out, and I would hope that we could find a better way to use almost one point four million dollars. And for that reason, there will be a no vote on this.
Very good. Thank you. Counselor Barth?
In number two, we need to make sure we're making the voting process as safe as possible, and I think our representative from the Health Department made that clear. So I appreciate this proposal, and I am very much in support. We're voting yes.
Counselor Barth, unfortunately, I couldn't hear your first point. Would you repeat your first point?
I think my overall point was, number one, that during this time, we need to do everything we can to support our citizens to exercise their right to vote, and I think this proposal does that. And number two, my broader point was that we need to make sure they do it in a way that's as safe as possible.
All right, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Additional comments from Counselors? Counselor Adamson? Counselor Adamson? You're on mute. Counselor Adamson, would you try that again?
My, can you hear me now?
Yes.
I, I just wanted to ask to, to be added on as a cosponsor for this proposal. I think, as Counselor Barth had mentioned, anything that we can do to encourage voting by our population that we ought to be doing, especially at these uncertain times when people may have concerns about going out in public. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Masqueri?
Yes, I'd like to be added as a cosponsor also. Safety of everybody in the Indianapolis, Marion County is utmost important.
Thank you very much. Additional comments? Counselor Hart?
Oh yeah, first time before, comment, I had a, a question. Is there anybody here that are, is addressing questions pertaining to this, this evening?
Yes, we have from the Elections, Elections Office, Brianne Delaney.
All right, thank you, Brianne. So my first question is, do we have enough storage space to accommodate all of these absentee ballots?
President Osalee, may I respond?
Yes, please.
Yes, we do. We have a large warehouse located at thirty-seven thirty-seven East Washington Street where we've accommodated up to close to a hundred thousand absentee ballots in the past. So I believe that we can hold at least that many.
And when counting those ballots, will we have enough room to maintain social distancing practices for those individuals to keep them safe when counting?
The Indiana, yes, to answer your question in short, and also the Indian Election Commission has, for this election, allowed us to move our county operation to more than one location if we, if that's necessary. So I think we're still working on that possibility, but I believe that we will have enough room.
And are we getting any special posted rates for this, for being such a bulk program?
Yes, we are. We are working with Reiko, who has the city's contract for printing, and they are using their corporate discount, or I guess a corporate rate somehow for the postage. So we're paying less than fifty cents for the outgoing mail, and then we have a prearranged rate for the return mail.
And are we doing anything, or is the state doing anything to help offset any of this cost due to just the change of Election Day?
As far, nothing is set in stone right now. I, I know that there's a lot of talk of them possibly providing PPE and hand sanitizer, things like that. There's also the Federal Cares Act, supposedly some of that is supposed to come through to elections, but I have no direct knowledge of what will be coming from the state or federal government at this time.
Okay, and then did the Election Board have an opportunity to vote on sections two and three of this proposal? And if they did, what day did they do that?
The Election Board did portions of the proposal that came under contract for the new equipment that we purchased. They did vote on. As far as it goes towards absentee ballot application, those funds, those were not voted on by the Election Board.
Okay, so the, the funds weren't voted on. And then my final question before I have a comment is that I was told the mayor is addressing a letter and signing a letter inside of this. When the application goes out, is that true?
Um, the letter actually now is going to be coming from Marion County Clerk, Myla Eldridge, on Marion County Election Board letterhead. So at this point, that's the letter that's been sent to the printer, and I do want to let everyone in the room know that we're finalizing the details for the letter that will be the application, and it's my plan to send that both to the Marion County Republican Party and the Marion County Democratic Party with contents of the letter, the application, the date that we expect it to start hitting mailboxes so that both parties can follow up with any chaser mail or anything that they want to do, because I know there's a lot of effort being put into absentee applications. So we do plan on communicating that hopefully tomorrow, if I can get information from the printer so that everybody knows what's being communicated to the voters.
I'll just go here. Thank you very much, Brianne, and, and I just want to follow up by saying that, you know, I can tell that Dr. Kane is trying to have a very conservative approach in, in keeping individuals safe, and you know, that's, that's ultimately my concern, right, is making sure that Hoosiers are, are safe and healthy during this time. And, you know, ultimately, you know, we, we, you know, we're working on shrinking down voting locations and updating the equipment, and I know some of those costs are, are inside of this request as well, and, you know, ultimately, what I'd like to see is the voter experience be the greatest it can be, in that all Indianapolis residents have the opportunity to express their right to vote. What kind of pains me a little bit is, is going out kind of far outside of the norm, right, and generally voters request that ballot. Sending out six hundred and thirty-four thousand pieces of mail to registered voters without getting their request, I, I feel is a bit excessive in terms of cost when we're going into a, a period of time where a lot of folks are on unemployment, and we know we're losing income tax. And so I think a thousand, or a million dollars could be used in a, a better way than just sending out a bunch of mail. And I think we could do a better job and wait for those requests to come in first. So that's just where I'm at on it, but I appreciate, Brianne, you, you joining the conference tonight and explaining all those answers that you gave. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, President. Honestly, I just want to say, especially, you know, in my district, I know the demographic of the voter is an, an older population, and I think following Dr. Kane's lead, it is very crucial for us to protect this population, and I definitely will be voting yes for this proposal. I think it is very, very important that, for me, I, I know it is a lot of money, and it's the price tag that we do have to look at, but it's very crucial to send this mailer out so that these, these residents can have the option to receive this, this absentee ballot application and have the option to have this. By the time June second rolls around, hopefully we're on the other side of this surge, and I feel that if we do not send this mailer out and give these residents this option, we're going to be taken two steps backwards, and we cannot do that in Marion County, and it's too dangerous. And I think this is not a partisan issue. This is a public safety issue, and we must follow Dr. Kane's lead on this. And I, I am honored to stand beside her in this issue and vote yes, and I think it's crucial that as a council that we stand beside her in this, and I'm honored to do so.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Counselor Jones. Counselor Anay, and then followed by Counselor Carlino. Counselor Anay?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to address Proposal one thirty-seven. When you take a look at it, this is a primary. This is not a general election. A primary is a party-driven election, and so it would be a whole different story, in my opinion, if we were talking a general election. We are not. We are talking a primary. Or if you take a look, we were talking about a situation in which absentee applications were being automatically mailed to folks. A ballot was mailed to folks who, who had participated in the last several primaries, but folks who hadn't had to request one. That's not happening here. So essentially, our city will be spending one point four million dollars on what fundamentally amounts to sixty people running in twenty contested races. So I'll be a no vote this evening. I would encourage my colleagues to do that.
All right, very good. Counselor, Counselor Carlino?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to remind everybody that, you know, our, our vote machines are digital. Folks have to operate via touchscreen, and oftentimes that will require removing their hand PPE to vote. It will require between every vote, the, the machinery to be cleaned, as Brianne was saying. So I think that one point five million dollars to raise awareness and to save lives and allow folks for their, their voice and their vote to be heard is critical during this time, and so I'll be a yes vote tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Counselor Maury?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to add on, I actually, I want to start out with a question for Brianne Delaney. She said they were authorized for more than one, for more than one facility for this election. Does that then come before us again for a rental usage of more than one facility?
I was specifically referring to our central count of absentee ballots, and it, just saying, and the question came from Counselor Hart about whether we had enough room for the facility, and in the event we don't believe we have enough room, we could rent another facility. Or I know that, you know, we have buildings on Election Day, and those are required to be rent-free. So I think there's a lot of options that wouldn't require any additional expenses for that.
So potentially, then you could be coming back to us for more money to rent one of those facilities?
Likely not. Most of the cost for facilities rentals that we paid are fair minimum, and our, I believe our regular budget could withstand that type of rental, especially since our, you know, Election Day sites are likely to be less this election. So I think that our regular budget will withstand that. So I think that our regular budget will withstand that.
In closing, I just think that I can see the need for this in a general election. Folks, we are talking about a primary in a party election. You are picking your candidate in a primary election. We have folks that are going to fast food restaurants to pick up food. We have folks, I've been to a hardware store. I have come within close encounters of folks because they're packed. I've been to city parks, and they are packed. We are talking about spending over a million dollars to help twenty percent of voters, which is historically what we get on a primary vote, to come out and make their, cast their vote. A million dollars for twenty percent of the county. I think right now that this is a little much for us to spend on a primary. I can see any general election spending this money. But right now, I think we need to be a little more fiscally responsible with the taxpayers' dollar. And for those reasons, I will be an absolute no. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Brown. Ali Brown.
Thank you, President. There's a couple of things I'd like to remind some of my colleagues, particularly my male colleagues. White women, frankly, got the right to vote a hundred years ago. And our sisters of color, it's been even shorter. Voting is an essential right. When we talk about putting things, putting, eliminating barriers for people to vote, one of the things is with these absentee ballot applications, it's a wet signature, which means that people have to print these ballots off at home, absolutely, print their requests off at home and then send them in. Oops. Sorry. Print them off at home and send them in. Many people do not have printers at home, thus creating a barrier. I know that there are people out at parks, and there are people out at the hardware store and things like that. But we're the body that's supposed to be discouraging those kinds of things right now and trying to keep people safe. And this is how we keep people safe. And I don't care if it's a primary election. I don't give it to a general election. It's about keeping them safe, and it's about allowing people to exercise their basic democratic rights. When it comes to money, we spend a lot of money on a lot of things in this city. And making sure that the people in this city have their chance to, have a chance to make their voices heard in an election. And if we have to do this in November, make sure that they are able to, they know what they're doing now, so they can do it in November, is essential. Sending people to get in line to get sick because you want to save a little bit of money is silly. It's silly, and it's offensive. It's offensive to the people who vote in every election who now can't. My mother had a heart attack a week before lockdown. She's one of these people who's voted in every election of her entire life and is not able to go and stand in line at the polls. She needs that paper so she can do that. We have to think about the people who aren't us, who don't have the privilege to sit here and talk about how to figure out a way. I will be strongly supporting this. Love to be as a co-sponsor, because I believe that everyone deserves the right to vote. Removing barriers from allowing, making it harder for them to, is essential in a democracy. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Ethan Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to, you know, what my colleagues were saying about, you know, how really, you know, it doesn't matter if it is a primary or a general, it's still an election, and people have the right to vote. And we shouldn't be, you know, differentiating between the two. It's still an election, and people are going to be voting in it. And we saw in Wisconsin, you know, what happened when people didn't take heed about that same thing in a primary. So how about we, I'm just saying that we could take a view of what happened there and not make a repetition of that mistake here in Indianapolis. And to the view of that just twenty to twenty-five percent of people vote in a primary, that's still over a hundred and twenty thousand people in the city of Indianapolis. Yes, I would like to protect over a hundred thousand people from potentially getting sick with COVID- nineteen if we had the chance to do so. So that is just my point of view.
Very good. Counselor Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Get my screen up here. There may not be a need to, this may not cost over a million. Some of this money of the million is allocated for the general election. If we're back on track by then from COVID, we may not need the mailer for the general election. It may bring us down at a much lower rate of a half a million. And then we may not need that half a million if folks don't return their ballot. But here again, I agree with some of my colleagues, Counselor Carlino and Jones, and some of you others that have spoken and spoken very well, and Ali, Counselor Brown, very passionate. You know, this is unprecedented times, and unprecedented times, we need to do unprecedented things as leaders of the people and be a voice for the people. And I say at this time, we be, we stand up and we stand united for those people. We take under the leadership and the guidance of Dr. Virginia Kane. She's advised us. We all heard the same message. She asked us if possible, she had, what I heard from hers, what she said most foremost, is to keep, her concern is the June second election. That's the first thing I heard her say is her election, is her concern, is that election and keeping people away from those polls. So if she is the head of our health department, and as her expertise, I'll take that very seriously as what she's done under her leadership under many years here in Marion County. If this is one of her major concerns, if we as the twenty-five bodies of this counselor, under our leadership and our professionalism, can help her do one thing with a half a million dollars or less, is to help keep people safe and provide them democracy and something that they are due owed. I think we as leaders of this city should do it. I think we should stand up and do it well and do it as a united front. I urge my colleagues to do the same thing and vote, yeah. To Proposal One Thirty-Seven tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, very good. Thank you very much. Counselor Jared Evans. Yes?
I'm sorry. Mr. President, and I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor. This is Counselor Jackson.
Thank you, Counselor Evans. Jared Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of comments right here. First, I want to echo the sentiment that Counselor Ethan Evans just made about Wisconsin. That's what's been on my mind, is that we're not duplicating a repeat here in Indianapolis. And the other comment is from Counselor Kristen Jones, talking about our elderly population. I represent the second oldest district in our city. And when we talk about that population of people who are going to vote, even though it is a primary, it is typically the older generations that are showing up and voting. And these are the people who are the most susceptible to getting this virus and having the illness. So it is about protection. And, Mr. President, I'm just going to be blunt and say it. This smells political to me, which is absolutely ridiculous, because it shouldn't be. It is a health issue for our city. And so I hope, as my colleagues are thinking about this, we're doing what's right based on our citizens and not on a wallet. Not about being physically conservative. We're trying to make sure that we don't spread this, that we don't hurt more people or cause people to die. And the long-term effects of this could be detrimental to the economy of the city anyways if we allow in-person voting and people spreading this virus. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Jones.
Thank you, President Osley. I would also like to be added as a co-sponsor. And then can I ask Brienne a question?
Please.
Brienne, is it correct that there will also be a stamp on that envelope for them to mail the application back in?
There will be a paid postage mark, and the county will only be paying for mail that actually gets mailed back.
Okay. So it also, and also, that will also help keep people out of the post office. So if they had requested a ballot, as Counselor Maury is suggesting they do, then they would have to go to the post office to get postage to mail that back. So also, what we're doing is keeping our constituents and residents out of the post office by doing it this way. So we're keeping them out and helping in distancing. So by doing it this way, it's also helping people by keeping them home, keeping them safe by doing it this way. So it's also twofold. So thank you, Brienne. Thank you for doing that. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Anay.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to, again, reiterate, and I would just start out by saying some of the, what I would consider fear mongering that I've heard this evening, it's very unfortunate. But I would just like to say that these uncharted territories that we find ourselves in, uncharted waters, they require some additional steps. That is why the state of Indiana moved the primary from May five to June the second and changed the rules to allow for no excuse absentee voting. So no voter needs, no voter needs a reason to vote absentee. And with that, again, I'll just turn it back over, Mr. President, and I'll be voting no.
Very good. Counselor Potts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief. It's not lost on me that we are going to vote on Proposal Number One Thirty-Seven after we just passed additional funding for refrigerated units for the influx of deceased neighbors that our city has already experienced and will continue to experience. The price of our neighbors' public health is not something I am personally willing to negotiate on. And so to me, it doesn't matter what primary voter turnout is. But if we, as a body, can take any action that would allow even one person to remain home and stay safe in this unprecedented time, rather than showing up to a polling place and putting themselves in danger, I'm going to support it, and I hope my colleagues do as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. All right, I don't see any more hands. Madam Clerk, were there any questions written in on Proposal Number One Thirty-Seven?
No, there were no questions or comments.
All right, fellow counselors. Seeing no one here in the audience, if there are no additional comments, we will proceed to our vote. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Adamson. Counselor Adamson.
Counselor Adamson, you are on mute. Counselor Adamson.
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay.
Counselor Anay, nay.
Counselor Barth.
Counselor Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots.
Counselor Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown.
Counselor Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino.
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk.
Counselor Dilk, nay.
Counselor Evans.
Ethan Evans.
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans.
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves.
Counselor Graves, yes.
Counselor Gray. Counselor Gray. Counselor Hart.
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Holliday.
Counselor Holliday, nay.
Counselor Jackson.
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Johnson.
Counselor Johnson, aye.
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Counselor Lewis, aye.
Counselor Masgary.
Counselor Masgary, aye.
Counselor McCormick. Counselor McCormick. Counselor Maury.
Counselor Maury, nay.
Counselor Oliver.
Counselor Oliver, aye.
Counselor Osley.
Counselor Osley, aye.
Counselor Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray. Counselor Ray. Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Robinson, aye.
President Osley, I have, I believe, eighteen, aye, and. Or nay.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion carries. There is no business under special orders on finished business. The next item on our agenda is special orders final adoption. Proposal Number Ninety referred to the Public Works Committee Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not sure if I'm experiencing technical difficulties or not. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. With consent, I would like to take Proposals Number Ninety through Ninety-Seven together.
Consent.
Consent. Thank you. Proposal Ninety, Two Thousand Twenty, authorizes speed limit reductions to twenty-five miles per hour. Nor Raleigh and Rosel, Roseberry, common subdivision in District Two. Proposal Number Ninety-One, authorizes intersection controls at Foxfire Drive and Shadow Brook Drive in District Six. Proposal Number Ninety-Two, authorizes intersection controls along Hendricks Place between Washington and New York Streets in District Seventeen. Proposal Number Thirty, authorizes inter, turn restrictions on Thirty-Fourth and Pennsylvania Streets in the proximity of Shortridge High School in District Nine. Proposal Number Ninety-Four, authorizes speed limit reduction to twenty-five miles per hour in the Franklin, Claris, Franklin Park Estates subdivision District Twenty-Five. Proposal Number Ninety-Five, authorizes speed limit reduction to twenty-five miles per hour in the North Farm subdivision, District One. Proposal Number Ninety-Six, authorizes intersection controls at Muter and Southern Avenues in District Eighteen. And Proposal Number Ninety-Seven, authorizes intersection controls at Forum and Meadow, Meadow Drives in District Eighteen. Counselor Oliver moves, seconded by Counselor Boots, send Proposal Numbers Ninety through Ninety-Seven to the full council with a due pass recommendation, and that motion carried by a vote of eleven to zero, and I surrender. Second.
The motion is improperly moved and seconded. Are there additional comments from counselors? Seeing none, we will proceed to our vote. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Adamson.
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay.
Counselor Anay, aye.
Counselor Barth.
Counselor Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots.
Counselor Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown.
Counselor Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino.
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk.
Counselor Dilk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans.
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans.
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves.
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray. Counselor Gray. Counselor Hart.
Michael Hart, aye.
Counselor Hart.
Michael Hart, aye.
Counselor Holliday.
Counselor Holliday, aye.
Counselor Jackson.
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Johnson.
Counselor Johnson, aye.
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Counselor Lewis, aye.
Counselor Masgary.
Counselor Masgary, aye.
Counselor McCormick.
All right, Counselor McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury.
Counselor Maury, aye.
Counselor Oliver.
Counselor Oliver, aye.
Counselor Osley.
Counselor Osley, aye.
Counselor Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray. Counselor Ray. Counselor Ray's having technical difficulty. He's an aye.
Counselor Robinson, thank you.
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. That is 23. 23 a and 2 to none.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion carries. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 102, refer to Rules and Public Policy Committee Chairman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 102, amend section 151-23 of the code regarding council committees. Chair Osley stated that the Rules and Public Policy Committee is one of three permanent committees of the council. And that proposed amendment would allow for the appointment of more than eight counselors as the code currently prescribes. Counselor Johnson moves, seconded by Counselor Robinson, to send the proposal number 102 to the full council with a due pass recommendation. Motion carried by a vote of 7 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Thank you. Chairman Johnson, it's removed. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from counselors on proposal number 102? All right, seeing none, we will proceed to our vote. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Adamson? Counselor Adamson?
Counselor Adamson, can you, can you speak?
I'm a yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Ane?
Counselor Ane, aye.
Counselor Barth?
Counselor Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots?
Counselor Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown?
Counselor Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino?
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk?
Counselor Dilk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans?
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans?
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves?
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray? Counselor Hart?
Michael Hart, aye.
Counselor Holliday?
Counselor Holliday, aye.
Counselor Jackson?
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Counselor Johnson, aye.
Counselor Jones?
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Counselor Lewis, aye.
Counselor Mascary?
Counselor Mascary, aye.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye, Counselor McCormick, aye. And, Madam Clerk, can you please turn for 137 that I'm aye as well?
There's an echo. Counselor Maury?
Counselor Maury, aye.
Counselor Oliver?
Counselor Oliver, aye.
Counselor Osley?
Counselor Osley, aye.
Counselor Potts?
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray? Counselor Ray? Counselor Robinson?
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Mr. President, that is 23 to 0.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion carries. There is no business under special service district councils. There is no business under new business. The next item on our agenda is announcements and adjournment. I believe that Counselor Oliver has something that he wishes to say.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, to all councils, I want to acknowledge, I was asked to acknowledge by the general public that the witness, the volunteerism by the councils all over the city. And I happened to be at one last week at 21st and Arlington where we put together the food baskets. So I, I thank you to all the councils that are doing all they do. Also, the acknowledgement of the fallen officer. I don't know what the memorial route would be. It's coming Thursday. But I hope that some of you will be able to join with me and many others on that memorial route. If not, it certainly at the entrance to the Internet Motor Speedway. So more detail with that will be coming forward in the next 24 hours. Where we're going to be at and what memorial route it would be taking heading towards the Speedway. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The doctored agenda for this meeting of council having been completed, the chair will now entertain motions for adjournment.
Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Counselor Maury.
Mr. President, I have been asked to offer the following motion for adjournment by all counselors in memory of IMPD Officer Brian Lee. By all counselors in memory of Thomas Popchev. By all counsel, by Counselor Jones in memory of Donna Jane Gable. By Counselor Holliday in memory of Jack Butler. By counselors Boots and Potts in memory of Mary Holland. By Counselor Boots in memory of Paul Logan. Mr. President, I would like to move the adjournment of this meeting of the city, Indianapolis City County Council in recognition of and respect for the life and contributions of those persons I have specifically named. I respectfully ask the support of fellow counselors. I further request the motion be made part of the permanent records of this body and that a letter bearing the council seal and the signature of the president be sent to the family of each person advising of this action.
Thank you, Counselor Maury. Hearing no objections, the motion is received and the requests are so ordered. King nor further motions, we are adjourned. Thank you.